Good, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 8th meeting of our Aiken City Council. If you are inclined, please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in the city of Aiken, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. In your name we pray. Amen. Chief, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the meeting begins, I'll review the guidelines. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is required. There should be no disruptions from the floor while council members or members of the public are speaking. Anyone wishing to speak must be recognized so that we can retain order as we conduct the business of the city and all comments can be put into the public record. During public hearings, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and I will recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once and less questions from council are posed to the speaker. During the non-agenda public comment section, each speaker has three minutes and can only speak once. We now move to additions and deletions to the agenda. I recognize Mayor Protem Kay Brol for this agenda item.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much. Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. We hope you have had a wonderful Thanksgiving and are looking forward to a beautiful Christmas. Madam Mayor, we don't have any additions or deletions to our agenda.
Thank you so much. And that you will, your motion.
I move that we accept the agenda as it is presented.
All right, thank you. May I have a second, please?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Price made the second. All those in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. The minutes were provided to council for review prior to the meeting. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
I submit.
Councilwoman Diggs made the motion and a second from? May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Walto seconded the motion. Any comments or changes? All those in favor? There is one presentation on the agenda tonight. It is an update on the Unidirectional Flushing Program. I believe the presentation will be with our city engineer, Thomas Parrott, and Mr. Dave Johnson of Highfill Infrastructure Engineering. Will you please come up and give us your presentation?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. I'm Thomas Parrott, city engineer. Dave Johnson's going to give an update on the Unidirectional Flushing, where we are and where we're heading. So I'm going to turn it over to him and I'll be back here if you have questions.
All right. Good evening. I'm Dave Johnson with Highfill. I appreciate you guys having me in this, this evening. As Thomas said, I wanted to give a quick update on the Unidirectional Flushing Program that Aiken has been pursuing. So with that today, what I'd like to do, cover with this presentation, is talk about the downtown area UDF that was implemented earlier this year, kind of go over the key results and flushing observations that were made during that implementation of that Unidirectional Plan. And then I like to get, get into the details of what the next steps are for Aiken's Unidirectional Flushing Program, go through what we're working on for the downtown UDF plan, and then what we're working on for the Phase Two and Phase Three plans, and talk about some of the valve assessment work that's going to go along with that. And then lastly, just talk about the flushing and assessment schedules that we have planned for the 2026 calendar year. So with the downtown UDF, a quick overview, we took an area of the downtown, divided up into four flushing zones. Within those four flushing zones, we developed 73 flushing sequences. And these were developed to systematically go through the, the water infrastructure, the water lines in this area to clean and scour the, the pipes. And mainly, the, the effort here was to improve the water quality within the system. The flushing activities, they began July 23rd, 2025, and they were, they continued on for about, for a couple of weeks and finished wrapped up on August 7th, 2025. Some of the summaries from that, so over that timeframe, we, they, we flushed 27 miles of pipe. We used approximately about a million gallons of water to do the flushing activities. And the time spent actually with flushing, using the hydrants, flowing the water through there was about 31 hours. Some other key metrics coming out of there, so average flushing flow rates, they, over those, all 73 sequences averaged about 550 gallons per minute. Some were a little higher, some were a little lower, but the key thing that to kind of point out on this slide is the flushing velocities in the pipe. We developed the program to, to target at least a three feet per second minimum, and we were able to overcross the, all the, all the sequences, the flushing velocities averaged to a little over five feet per second. Another metric was the turbidity. And basically, what we looked at here is what the water looked like color-wise when we first opened the hydrants, and then what it looked like when we finished that flushing sequence. Forty-two percent of the, the flushing sequences started off with a heavy turbidity and ended in clear, and then about 27% medium to clear, and 10%, they were light when we started and went to clear. And we've got some examples of some of those in here. So this is Catawba Street, flushing sequence 39, example of going from a heavy turbid water to, to clear. The time, this one flushed for about 51 minutes to get it to that clear. And then had different pipelines that were flushing in this one, different diameters. So we, in those pipelines, we were able to get between five and almost seven feet per second, depending on those, size of those pipes. Another example, this one is Church Street near Eustis Park. We actually had two hydrants open on this one, and this is one of them that we got captured here where it was medium to heavy start that, that we were able to get to clear with some small particulates coming out still in about 48 minutes. Flushing velocities on here, you know, for around four feet per second. This other example here is York Street, flushing sequence 73. Another example, the heavy to clear, this was further, this was towards the end of the, the flushing activities. The flush time was only 21 minutes, so this one cleared up a lot quicker than some of the early, early ones. And again, flushing velocities on this one was five feet per second. So kind of moving forward with the UDF program, so we've got a couple of things in store for the, the downtown UDF program. We're planning to implement that again in, in February of, of next year. And, and basically, this is going to help us evaluate some of those metrics that we got in the summer of this year and help us determine what that implementation frequency is. Do we need to do this every six months? Can we do it every year? Can it be every other year for this area? So we're, we're working on, on getting, getting that going. And then to do that, there's some minor modifications we're making to that existing plan based off of site observations. And most of that is to change valves that were called to be closed and open some, and close different ones so we can improve some of the velocities in some of those pipelines. And then kind of going hand in hand with this, there's an RFQ that's, that's going to be, is advertised now, but it's going to be used to help select a contractor to implement these flushing and valve hydrant assessment services over the next handful of years. Then moving on from the downtown, we're expanding the, the flushing program to two different areas. We're calling it at the moment Phase Two and Phase Three. The Phase Two plan is really looking at areas directly west, north, and east of the downtown area, as shown in this map here. And then the Phase Three program is areas directly south of downtown, but north of the Pine Log Road area, also depicted on, on the map on, on the screen here. As we're getting into developing those UDF plans, we are also going to be implementing that valve assessment for both Phase Two and Phase Three. And the benefits of that is they're going to be able to go out there and, and check all these valves, locate them, operate them, confirm that they are capable to be utilized in the, in the, in the flushing plan to help kind of expedite development of that plan and have that ready to, to be implemented sooner rather than later. So schedule-wise, so right now, I mentioned the UDF downtown. We're planning to, to re-implement that one in February of 2026. As for the Phase Two and Three UDF plans, so what we're planning is, as soon as that flushing activities is done for the downtown area, we'd like to start on the valve assessments for the Phase Two and Phase Three areas, and then get through that. Then hopefully around April, we'd like to implement a, a small little pilot for both of those, and that's going to consist of about five flushing sequences where we go out there, we run those sequences, we collect the data, the pressures, the flows, and take that back to the model that we're using to help calibrate that a little bit. And then the plan is to have everything ready for implementation, Phase Two, October and November of 2026, and then Phase Three, implementing that flushing activities, November, December of 2026. And then kind of just a quick over benefits, you know, why are we doing the UDF program? The primary benefit is water quality improvements. It's going to help the city provide cleaner, clearer water by flushing out built-up materials and pipelines. It's going to help reduce customer complaints about discoloration, taste, and odor. It's going to give this, the, what the system more consistent water quality across different neighborhoods, and it's going to continue to help the city meet state drinking water requirements. As a secondary benefit, you know, there's, there's, there's some system improvements that could be identified for the valve and hydrant assessments that will go along with this. You know, it's going to help check those, those assets and make, and, and find any that are in, in need of repair or replacement. It's also going to help city staff have the confidence to know that they can quickly isolate small areas during repairs to limit outages by doing those assessments. And then I think the flushing and the assessments are going to help pinpoint older or problem pipes within the system that, that could be addressed in future replacement projects. And then lastly, you know, GIS database is going to benefit from this. The data collected in the field, that's going to go back and update those maps and the records to give everything, keep everything as up to date as possible, which will in turn allow city staff and their crew to respond more expeditiously when needed. All right, and that's the presentation for this evening. Are there any questions?
Madam Mayor. Mr. Johnson, this is to finish in December of next year, 2026, is that correct? This Unidirectional Flushing you're doing right now, you're doing the phases?
Yeah, the Phase Two and Three, the plan is to finish development of those and implement them by the end of 2026.
So then is there, do we do it again at a certain time? Is this an ongoing thing, or is after that, things are okay and you wait till you see if there's an issue or?
Traditionally, like, a lot of systems who do implement the UDF programs, they, they do put it on a, okay. An annual or by, every two years, depending on, on the needs. You know, older pipeline, you might need to do a little more frequently. So that's one of the things we're trying to, to answer with the downtown, doing that again in February.
Okay, great. I didn't, just wondered if it's a one-time, or you keep kind of testing or looking at evidence to see? Thank you.
I have a question, Madam Mayor. Under your systems improvements, and you've done some flushing already, have you, because of, I'm asking this question because of the aging infrastructure that we have in certain parts of our town, have you identified additional improvements that are needed in some of the areas that have not had infrastructure replaced in 70-plus years?
I'll, I'll touch on it. So, I mean, one of, some of the things that we did with the initial ones was identify where, like he was mentioning before, where we need valves, where we need additional hydrants to be able to isolate some of those areas. As far as the plan moving forward, it's really in what Kay was talking about earlier is, well, we're going to reevaluate the downtown area, we'll, we'll keep doing it, and that will help us pinpoint those areas that do need to be replaced because the, the conditions won't continue to improve. We are doing a couple of other things along with this. Don't really want to get all into tonight, but we'll, we'll keep you guys updated, but that will be part of it as far as being able to identify those particular areas that do need to be replaced.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. I just appreciate the effort, what you all have been doing, having water that was just like that York Street, that coffee-looking. Most of my neighbors had it, and so we have not had any other problems since they've did this. And so we're grateful, and I, my concern is the Phase Three service area. That's going to come, two and three will come up, and that was the, the one of the areas that was most affected in my district, so I was.
Right, and it's important to note with that, yes, it, it looks really bad there, but that's because it's what we're trying to get it to do.
That's right.
We're trying to get it out. Now, normal circumstances, when you have lower flows, we're, we're doing normal, you know, two feet per second kind of flows that you would normally see in the, in the system, you're not going to see that. We're, we were trying to create those conditions to, to help clean it. So is, is this a, you know, a one-shot deal and we're done? No. I mean, this is part of ongoing maintenance where a whole system, so this is one of those, those things we're touching on right now. And it's, we hopefully continue to see real value in it, so.
I, I think it is, and, and you're mapping to understand where the problems occur, and we're doing the repair and maintenance, which I think is really commendable. My only question is, have you, did you map where the complaints were on those two initial episodes so that we could?
They, they do have, we do have all the questions, so. And, and again, it's, it's a process, so we've got that data. We also have historical records about repairs and all that to pinpoint those. It's a living system, so even, you know, recently, I won't get into specifics, but there's a section of pipe downtown that we continue to have problems on, and we need to get it moved up the ladder to be able to, to replace it sooner than later, you know? Those are things that we're constantly working on.
Well, I just wanted to appreciate your efforts because I have, in, there have been people that have said, people have been out repairing water lines in the middle of the night and would not stop until it was done. That's commending you all for doing it, so, so thank you. And if there are any complaints in any current, if somebody has a problem, follow the, what's on the website and what you all have put out there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much.
Counselwoman Morgan, does this happen all over the city? Does every, I mean, I've never had brown water, but my neighbors, these two ladies on the front row, well, these three on the second row, they had brown water and they are stone strew from my house. I've never had it.
Yeah.
And people think I paid y'all not to, but I'm, I'm just wondering.
It, it is and can be, you know, because again, our system's so large and there's so many interconnections that it, you could just be lucky enough.
Blessed.
Yes. I mean, you are lucky enough to live here. But with that, I mean, it, it really is just dependent on where you are and what the connections are. Because we're, we're in some ways probably overly connected, but with our water and sometimes in our community as well, but really just, you know, it just depends on where you are sometimes.
Thank you.
A question I'd like to see, maybe I need more attention, I'm just spending a lot of attention to it, but to find the, the exact problems, because just flushing out the sediment and the particulates is, now obviously sediment and particulates are getting into the system, and you're flushing it out to make it better. But have you done, I mean, like concentrated, the sanitary sewers do I and I studies, inflow and infiltration studies. You'd really try to pinpoint where water is getting into the system. Now, have you concentrated at all on that to find out where exactly sediments are getting into the system?
I mean, they're, they're coming from the pipes, they're themselves.
Yeah, crack pipes?
No, like the pipe material itself.
The pipe material?
Yes, because our, our pipes, the majority of ours, because of when there was construction in the 50s or our first expansion, a lot of those pipes are cast iron pipes, so they're unlined, which means that there's, there's no protection on it. Again, I didn't want to get into all the things that we're, we're working towards and through, but one of the things is, is there's really, there are two other key aspects of it, which would be chemistry of the water, making sure that we're doing everything we can to, to prevent those things. The, the second point would be, you know, doing lining of those, those larger. So yes, we're doing that, we're putting, putting together plans for that. That's really where, it's not coming, it's not coming from sources. When it comes out of the wells or the surface treatment plant, it's perfect.
All right.
Because it has to be, so it's not coming from anywhere else.
Okay.
And there will, there'll be signage for the, the citizens when you are doing the flushing?
Yes, there will be signs for citizens. I will say we.
Because we'll forget by then.
Yeah, we'll have sign, and we do that with the flushing, the traditional hydrant flushing as well, so there'll be notifications out for that as well that we do annually.
And I've, I, I want to add two things. First, I was speaking with someone how, you know, with pipe replacement, we did do a recent pipe replacement downtown that looped our system. It, it eliminated the dead end, and the, one of the beneficiaries mentioned to me that since they went live on the line about a month ago, they've not had any issues. We had to install a post-hydrant prior to, to regularly flush the line, and that seems to be working well. And as it relates to the overall topic of the sediments in the line that, that naturally occur with the galvanized metal line, I know we got a lot of questions about the safety of the water, and the one thing I want to mention is that to say that the water is not safe, and I understand just generally the, the appearance, but we follow the, and we're licensed and regulated by the State of South Carolina Department of Environmental Service, Department regulated by the state of South Carolina Department of Environmental Service, Department of Public Health former, DHEC. And if there were issues of the safety of the water, we would be under a consent order and so forth, and it would be, they, it, they would be publicizing that for the users of the water system. And that has not happened, and there is not, the, the water, there are no questions in the regulatory, from the regulatory viewpoint, from those that are regularly monitoring our water about its safety. I know that question came up understandably, but you know, there are people that, that continue to say that, and that's just not correct, so thank you.
Thank you both for your dedication to this and getting that problem under control. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for your presentation. We will now open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for a total of 30 minutes. Yes, sir.
I think I'll disagree with a few things. I am Dr. Robert A. LaShear of LaShear Engineering LLC. Let me take this to my seat and speak.
Prefer you not to.
I don't believe it will reach that far.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, I am Dr. Robert A. LaShear of LaShear Engineering LLC at 205 Longleaf Court in Aiken. I am still gravely concerned about Aiken cover-ups of drinking water safety problems. Aiken is American miniature for our national drinking water safety dangers. Aiken and South Carolina cover-ups of drinking water dangers continue to threaten our health. Both the city of Aiken and the state of South Carolina parallel their forces to stonewall legitimate freedom of information act requests for information to further prove the connection between water main breaks and the transmission of infectious diseases in Aiken. Important information is censored from the public. This safety concern is documented in many publications that are summarized in my op-eds. The deeper that I dig into this investigation, the dirtier the story becomes. Governor McMaster refused to respond to a concern, including a statement that I firmly believe that the Aiken City government is involved in a cover-up of Aiken water main breaks to increase taxes and dangerous health, and a cover-up investigation is warranted. The South Carolina Department of Public Health absurdly claims that dates and zip codes invade personal privacy of people who were infected by waterborne diseases. The South Carolina Department of Public Health acknowledges 68 cases of infectious drinking water diseases in Aiken between 2018 and 2024 where death information was not provided. Disease data was also redacted without explanation by the South Carolina Department of Public Health for the 2025 Aiken brown water fiasco. False reporting was provided by Aiken for the 2025 Aiken brown water fiasco when we were misinformed about the brown water cause. Aiken claims that additional data and information previously provided to others is unavailable. Without such data, cross referencing disease information to water main breaks is nearly impossible. The single case that Aiken cannot censor was recorded for an Aiken resident in an earlier op-ed. An Aiken resident drank clear water that passed through a filter which does not filter cryptosporidiosis from drinking water. When she went upstairs to brush her teeth, she thought, saw that brown water was flowing from the faucet in her bathroom sink. She was ill for five days after drinking partially filtered brown water, where cryptosporidiosis symptoms appear in two to 10 days. She collapsed within several days of drinking brown water, and she was later hospitalized for four days in January 2020. And the cause of her illness was unknown for several years until it was diagnosed as cryptosporidiosis. Evidence concludes that she was infected with cryptosporidiosis by Aiken drinking water. Sadly, Aiken claims that there is no such evidence. As long as the truth is buried in backroom politics, drinking water will not be as safe as it can be. Our health and our lives are unnecessarily risked. As, as one resident said about Aiken, and it happened to be that resident, they just don't care. And my question, is there corruption in Aiken? Mayor Milner, you and Mr. Beedenbaugh, the city manager, in my opinion, threaten our lives. Will you permit a city council work session to publicly discuss drinking water safety concerns? And that's my question.
Thank you for your comments.
Can we have, can we have a work session to talk about these issues?
Thank you for your comments.
There's no answer to that question? You said in September that you, you would answer my questions at the last work session. That was one of the questions. Can we have a work session?
I believe I did answer your questions.
The only question I got is there's not one scheduled. That's not an answer.
I believe the, your department answered his questions, correct?
His answer was there's not one scheduled. That does not say whether you're going to allow one or not. So you're saying you're not going to allow one? I just want that to be clear.
Allow a, a what?
A work session to discuss this public safety concern for our community.
I believe we already did.
There was a work session, and you had time at it earlier this year.
That was a work session where you made false comments against me and smeared my character, sir? That's, that's the session you were talking about? And that smear of my character was the reason that you canceled the second work session, I believe? Is that correct or am I mistaken?
Mistaken.
Was I mistaken about you smearing my character and making false statements in that and making false statements to the, the entire city council in that meeting? You stated in that meeting that, that you, and I, I don't have the exact quote, but you basically said, I claim that I can stop all water main breaks, and you used that to dismiss all my work, smearing my character. But I never said that. I've given you copies of the two presentations I made, and you have them in your records. And in each of those, each of those records, it says something different than what you said. It's in black and white, sir. I sent you a copy of it. So I guess the answer is, no, public safety is not your concern, and you will not have a work session, correct? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Kirk? Yes?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. We'll bring it down just a notch here. We have seen an increase in the homeless, as we always do. And we're, we've got the shelter at, the Salvation Army will open it when it gets down below 30 degrees at night. But between 30 and 40, it's still cold out there. We will have some warming stations set up, one at Aiken Ebenezer Church and one at 316 Greenville Avenue. Those will probably be between four and six or five and seven. So for that time, we've got people where we can get them warm and keep them a little bit dry in case it gets wet and things like that. We're still short on blankets, sleeping bags, and tents. People say, well, you know, the tents, why do you want to keep on enabling them? Well, because we don't have room for them in the end. That's the reason we do it, so that they got someplace that's dry and can stay that way. Lex isn't here, so, I mean, he is, oh, he didn't even come say hello to me. Boy. Now I'm really upset. Now I'm going to get down to business now. I'll let him speak for himself then. But we also are in need of a cup of soups, just the ones that we can make, ramen noodles, so that we can keep on feeding these people as well. This is for the evening times. We, we've got other activities throughout the day for, for people to come and do, do certain things. We're trying to get them to go to work, so that's one of the things we're trying to work on. Last month, last month, 257 possible overdoses, okay? That's, that's 40 less than the month before, but we had five fatalities. That's four more than we had the month before. And the thing is, these are not people that are on the street. These are the ones that are going into the hotels or into somebody's bathroom or in somebody's house and overdosing. We, we work with people all day long with these, with these issues. It's not getting any better. I can tell you that right now. But it's not only the people on the street. We've got doctors, lawyers, and everything else that are, that are getting hooked up in this stuff. So I think that what we would like to do is have some more training available for that. And if you guys have a good idea on that, please contact me. And if you see people out in the streets, get ahold of your city council members so they can get ahold of me.
Thank you.
And we will go out and take care of them. I've got, I went over. I'm sorry.
It's fine.
Any questions?
Lex, I mean Kirk, I'm sorry. The warming stations stay open just until five?
For, five to seven for us.
Okay.
The city has the community centers and whatever time they're opening till, that's supposed, is that what it, what we had come to an agreement on?
Yes.
So whatever time the community center shut down, they have to be out.
So if Smith Hazel closes at eight or nine, they stay over there?
I mean, it is available if anyone wants to use it to get out of the elements until closing.
And then that, you gotta go.
Yes, once the facility closes, because we're not...
It's a liability.
Yeah, and we're not permitted to have the overnight because of a lot of, you know, the building is not constructed for that.
Okay.
That it?
Thank you. Thank you, Kirk. Yes, sir.
Lex Perry, 1526 South Boundary Avenue, Southeast, Pastor of C4 Impact Ministry. Good evening to everyone. As Kirk was saying, we do have a warming station that's going to be open. It is open Monday through Saturday from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM each day. We're providing soup, you know, and we also scheduling showers and also the laundry as well, just so folks can get cleaned up. We also still have the computers there as well so that folks can also, once we find out exactly what it is, do a little bit of triage, they can get on the computer, start looking for jobs, also helping them get IDs and those type of things as well. And that's also open during the day. We have the, the showers and the laundry, and laundry available during the day from 10:00 AM, starting at 10:00 AM, Monday through, through Saturday. So, you know, if anybody, you know, knows of someone, you see them, they can come to us. It gives us an opportunity, again, like I said, to triage, find out exactly what it is that they need between Kurt and I, Izone, Izone Aiken, and several other organizations that we are all working together to try to solve this issue. We also make referrals over to Aiken Bar and Bowl Mental Health or to the hospital, and they also call us if they have a case where someone needs some housing. We currently have 18 adults and seven children that we're currently housing, and we are still interviewing folks a lot tomorrow. And we are still looking for additional housing opportunities as well. And I do thank those in the community who are coming out and developers who are contacting me and with an opportunity to see if there's something we can work out. Because what we're doing is working. We know that it is one of the fastest ways to get folks off the street. We can usually do it within 72 hours after we interview people, as long as we have a place for them to go. So again, I want to thank you for the support that you all have given us. If you, again, see someone in need, use Relink.org is a great resource to go to first, but then of course you can call Kurt and I, we'll, we'll be there, you know? This is a 24/7 thing that we do. I'm always monitoring my phone. I'm always available. Except for Sunday, I tried to, one time, I said Monday through Saturday, I tried to unplug on Sunday, but I will answer the call if you call me. I promise you that.
Lex, where's those warming stations located?
Well, the, the one we have is at 316 Greenville Street Northwest, right at my office. We have a, we use one of the apartments as, we call it the clubhouse, but we use that as the warming station.
Pastor Perry, excuse me, I want to thank you for the lady that I referred you to and you got back with me and let me know, and I appreciate that very much.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're always watching, and we're very familiar with most of the folks that you, that you refer to us. I think hardly anybody gets past us. We know a lot of folks by name, but we're still available to try to help them out. You can lead a horse to water, we can't make them drink, but we're going to do our best, okay?
Well, I don't know whether you work with Teresa Callahan, but I tell you what, she's been my go-to person the last few weeks, and I reached out to her last year about a regular person that's always homeless. What she says, she's not homeless, but you've been in, staying in the woods and you've been at other locations, and each time you have to leave. So she's been a lifesaver. She was able to, to call me right back and help try and find a solution. Unfortunately, the person left before she could even pick her up, but she did her part.
It is, so everyone know, it is part of the challenge. It's, it's really a myth that people really want to be homeless. It's a matter of spending the time so that they build the trust, so that they know that you really care. And, and that's why it's important for us to continue those touches, and don't get tired of referring them. You know, we, we, every touch that we get, we get one step closer to helping them to make that decision to come out. We've had folks that have been out there for six to 10 years. Now they're in-house, and we, we have two people, as a matter of fact, one was six years out on the street and the other one was 10 years out on the street. They're now housed and they're making really good headway, you know? So, you know, we need to continue to do that.
Madam Mayor, let me comment on Lex and Kirk. This has been something that this population, that's been talked about 25, 30 years, and all that happens is the number just increases. You can't tell me, given the income of people in this town and what I see happening in different framework in this town, that people cannot get, come together, have a huge fundraiser, identify some property, have a 30,000 or 40,000 square foot building, or get one that's already existing. You renovate it, you start working with people like yourself, and Kirk, you spend a lot of hours out there trying to help these individuals, and all we can say is you're doing a good job. That is not enough. And our heavenly Father is not pleased with that. There is enough churches in this town, enough people in this town, that know enough, know enough people with influence that can do something. You have the city of Aiken, and I'm not leaving aside, you have the county, and you have the state, and you have the feds. Somebody ought to be able to do something so that you will not have to do this every time, every week, every day. At least get a facility. That is my sermon today. It can be done.
And that is our prayer for that to happen. And, and for folks to say, who's going to do it? I promise you, we are dedicated to it.
I know that.
We're dedicated to it, so it will not be, you don't have to worry about the leadership wise. We've got a lot of people here who are willing to dedicate the time to it to make it happen, so.
You have the volunteers.
Of course.
It takes money, it, it takes resources.
Yes, it does.
You can't do it without that.
It does.
Talk is cheap.
All right. But we got a lot of good people in Aiken. We're just calling you out to just, just to give us a hand. We appreciate you all.
Thank you.
God bless.
Thank you, Lex. Anyone else would like to speak?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, Jacob Ellis, Three Short Court, Aiken, South Carolina. A friend of a coworker brought to my attention that there is a, maybe in the pipe works, a proposed development out on Anderson Pond Road coming before the county soon, and then she brought to my attention that part of it would be maybe annexed into the city, 113 houses out on Anderson Pond Road. When is enough enough? We have the old mall site being developed with condos and apartments. We have the Powderhouse Connector Road being developed with housing and condos. Do we really need more? Do we really need more strain and wear and tear on our aging infrastructure of roads and water? I propose for a, to look into a proposed moratorium on housing developments within the city limits of Aiken until we can get some of these infrastructure improvements updated and we can get ahead of the curve and then go back to building. Mount Pleasant just ended this year, I think it was a seven-year moratorium on housing and developments of certain kinds, and their population still grew. So if Mount Pleasant can do it, there's no reason we can't do it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Did someone raise their hand back there? Anyone else? Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My problem seems pretty small in the realm of things.
Your name, please?
To tell you.
Your name, please?
James Brody, and I'm now residing on Two Notch Road in Aiken, South Carolina. That, it's a quality of, um, life issue. I have to listen to leaf blowers most every day that I work at home, and I've adapted to that. But now my weekends are by Bruce's Field, and there's an irony here that when you drive down Whiskey Road, there's an eleven hundred dollar fine for straight pipes, but Bruce's Field can have horse shows every weekend, and this voice comes through the trees, and it's talking to me about the class and this and that. You know, it seems like they have enough horse shows there, they could buy more speakers and kind of reduce their noise level. And noise is a quality of life thing. That's all I have to say, I know you guys can take care of that quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And I will, uh, reach out to the county since Bruce's Field is in the county, uh, to see what their code calls for.
Okay, I think we're done here. Thank you all. We now have approval and discussion of appointees to various city boards, committees, and commissions. Mr. Beanbell?
Thank you. Madam Mayor and Council, we have the following appointments for consideration. James Horsh to the Building Code Board of Appeals, Jacob Ellis to the Accommodations Tax Committee.
Thank you, is there a motion to accept these nominations? So move, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Broll made the motion, and a second from Councilwoman Diggs. Comments from the public?
Good evening, Council, uh, my name is Jensen Jones, and I live at one thirty Florence Street Southwest Downtown, here in downtown Aiken. I'm actually just here to say I enthusiastically approve of both appointees, and I say for Jacob Ellis's sake, about damn time, okay? Uh, and I know it's a little ludicrous, whatever the heck of that, but we, I really hope to see, uh, people pick, uh, more, uh, make more appointees of the youth and others who have different thoughts. I am Sullivan's Iron. One of the greatest administrations in the history of the United States was Abraham Lincoln's administration. And his administration was a viper's den of, of political, uh, uh, enemies, and that became one of the greatest, uh, administrations in our nation's history. So when looking at appointees, council members, I don't even think you have to agree with them. Maybe a little bit you should, but I know, it's not, it shouldn't be a prerequisite. If you think they might add something to the city, then I think you ought to consider them. Thank you so much, and once again, great appointees.
Thank you, thank you, Jensen. Comments from Council? All in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous. Are there any nominations to consider at our next meeting? Okay.
Um, for the Accommodations Tax Committee, I'd like to nominate Tina McCarthy, she's already on the board, will extend her, uh, tenure. Uh, Arts Commission, Catherine Thomas, the same, she's been on, on it for some time and needs to be renewed. Building Code of Board Appeals, uh, Phil Haggerty, again, he's on there now and will extend his, his tenure. Same with the Community Development Committee of Judy Sennett, uh, she's been on there and wishes to continue. I'd also like to make a recommendation for the Planning Commission to have Scott Lycett, and the Recreation Committee to have Josh Rains.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have quite a few, um, boards and commissions people, and I, I beg your patience with me. Um, for Accommodations Tax, I nominate Chad Meldrum. Um, for your information, the term would be from March twenty-five, twenty twenty-four to March twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. So it's only a three-month term. I'm, I'd like to see if we could do it for that three months and an additional two years, if that's appropriate. And I think it is, is that a nod from the attorney that tells me I can do that, all right? So that's Chad Meldrum. Next one would be the Design Review Board. Um, I nominate Katie Lipskin. She will be doing the term from December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven. Next one would be the General Aviation Committish, Commission. Um, I nominate and reappoint Butch Roberson to that General Aviation Committee. His term had expired, and it will be, the existing term was September one, twenty twenty-five through September first, twenty twenty-seven. As to the Housing Authority, they are five-year terms. I nominate Trudy S. Boyd for the term of five years, which would begin, already began, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three through May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-eight. On the Planning Commission, um, Mr. Reynolds, the chair, has resigned effective December of this year. So I would nominate Mark Carmen, um, and that term would be an existing term from December first, twenty twenty-four through December first, twenty twenty-six. The Senior Commission, um, would like to extend Brenda Taylor, her appointment to the Senior Commission. Also, in regards to the Recreation Commission, Suzie Hasslip, she has, um, never really been appointed in all the eight years she's been serving, so I am saying that she could be appointed for the term September twenty twenty-four through September first, twenty twenty-six. That's less than nine months, I don't know if we can add a, a two-year to a nine-month. Okay. That's what I thought, is, okay. And then, um, yeah, Brenda Taylor, her term was March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five through March fourteenth, twenty twenty-seven. That's all.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I would like to reappoint Teresa Callahan to the Housing Authority.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, on the Equine Committee, uh, Chad Ingram has served for a number of years, and he's been a dedicated attendee, and I'd like to see him, uh, reappointed. His term expires next month. So he would begin his term, um, in January, his new term.
Thank you. Uh, I have, uh, for the Equine Committee, uh, reappoint David Manier. To the Planning Commission, I would like to reappoint Caleb Connor, and I would like to nominate Lucy Knowles for the Design Review Board. The next item under Old Business is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to rezone two parcels in the blocks rented by Richland Avenue East, Marrow Street Northeast, Orangeburg Street Northeast, and Barnwell Avenue Northeast from Light Industrial to Downtown Business.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to rezone property located at Richland Avenue East, Harborough Street Northeast, Orangeburg Street Northeast, and Barnwell Avenue Northeast from L I. Light Industrial to Downtown Business D B. The applicant is requesting that the two parcels be zoned, rezoned from Light Industrial to Downtown Business. These parcels are within the old Aiken overlay, and if, um, the rezoning takes place, this would not impact their, uh, their continuing to be in the overlay. The one thing I do want to mention also is the, there is some interplay between the zoning designation and any, and the overlay that may also apply to that parcel. And I think the simplest explanation is that the overlay is an additional layer of zoning that was created by the city, and our zoning ordinance states that the city council may designate overlay districts which impose regulations in addition to the underlining, underlying zone or relaxed requirements imposed by the underlying zone. Um, if there is a special public interest which the underlying zone does not address, and, uh, this does mirror South Carolina Code section. So, uh, as is the case with any other parcel where a rezoning via the Planning Commission is designated, the parcel does have to comply with those designations found in the overlay. Um, so, um, there is, um, and again, I'm just, uh, I wanted to bring this, uh, up as it relates to, uh, because I did receive some questions. Um, and also, um, we have enacted a provision in our zoning ordinance that reads if there is conflict or apparent conflicts between, uh, provisions of the zoning ordinance, the more restrictive provision shall apply, and that is sort of in line with, uh, how zoning is done in South Carolina. Uh, so in this case, if there is an apparent conflict, uh, between what the, uh, D R B, the overlay says versus the zoning ordinance, the more restrictive, uh, would apply. This is designated by our comprehensive plan as undeveloped. Uh, surrounding properties, um, zone general business, Light Industrial, R M L, and, uh, D B. Uh, the existing Light Industrial zoning does allow various types of development such as, uh, multifamily, equestrian, daycare, religious, et cetera. Uh, downtown would allow for additional commercial uses such as retail and office uses, uses but would restrict equestrian, vehicular, and industrial uses. It is across from property currently zoned D B., which is the proposed Market Side Village at, uh, the north, what is that, excuse me, southeastern corner of Williamsburg and Richland. And the D B. is more compatible with, uh, nearby residential and office uses than Light Industrial. And the Planning Commission at their November twelfth meeting, all those present, excuse me, it was approved unanimously with one abstention, or excuse me, uh, one, uh, person not present. So those present at the November twelfth meeting approved it, and, uh, it is being recommended by the Planning Commission to counsel it be rezoned from Light Industrial, L I. to Downtown Business, D B., the two parcels. City Council heard this at their meeting on November twenty-fourth, and is before you for second reading this evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Thank you so much, do I have a motion, please? Madam Mayor, I so move. That'd be Councilwoman Broll? And a second from Councilwoman Diggs. Any comments from the public? Comments from Council?
This is not the district that I represent, but it is District One where Councilwoman Diggs represent. And I don't hesitate to speak that we have been waiting, uh, for growth to occur on the east and west of the north side, and certainly it is, uh, coming with the approval of, of Council. Um, it is exciting to not only think about it, but the hope has never disappeared. The hope has been in the community, waiting, watching patiently, and now it's here. So I want to commend you, Councilwoman Diggs, for your not only persistence, but your patience as well.
Trying to keep hope alive. Your support.
Thank you. Um, all, and what, yes?
I just want to thank the, the people, party involved. Most of us were able to attend the charrette that they had. It, it, it was a perfect way to, to, for us to dialogue, to see, to observe, let the community have an opportunity to share the vision. Everybody should be so excited for this community, the whole community, that people that love this town, that have lived in this town, that want to design something for long-term effects for Aiken are involved. So kudos to everyone in, for the district that has a really exciting addition.
And if you missed a charrette, you really missed something good because all of the photographs of the proposed plans were just spectacular, and we are just so excited and glad that you choo-chose District Two. You kept hope alive. Thank you.
Uh, with that, all those in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous. Congratulations. And next, under Old Business, is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to authorize the city manager to execute and deliver an agreement to provide for the development of a parking deck and an agreement to stabilize and improve the Hotel Aiken and surrounding properties and other matters related thereto. Mr. Beanbell?
Thank you. You did read the title of the ordinance into record, so I will dispense with that. I guess the question is, how did we get to this point? After the failure of Project Pascalis and the subsequent lawsuit filed July fifth, twenty twenty-two, council resolved to see the Hotel Aiken project, uh, through. Um, a total reboot of the project took place that first started with a solicitation to find a firm to market the project as an adaptive reuse or renovated endeavor. With the, uh, um, vacant properties, it was natural, uh, a natural thing to, to pursue, uh, at that point in time. Um, two firms responded to the solicitation, and in two thousand twenty-three, we were selected, uh, Colliers International, been working with, uh, representatives out of their Columbia, South Carolina office. As, uh, one of the things that Colliers, uh, was attractive to us is their, uh, experience in, um, marketing these sort of properties. They have the contacts nationally, if not across, uh, overseas to, uh, put in, uh, we, we, we believed if Colliers could find someone, or excuse me, that if anyone could find someone, it would be Colliers. Uh, I want to emphasize, Colliers has only been working for the city of Aiken. Uh, I've have, I know I've had questions over the, uh, here recently about Colliers working for the Oliver Group. No, they are the city of Aiken's client, uh, and they have not been paid any money, um, uh, in, in terms of commission. Um, to this point, they will not until the property sold. We did, uh, pay for Colliers, uh, about over a year ago to attend, uh, Hotel Year's Convention in New York, and we paid for some marketing, uh, some, to boost, uh, as we were trying to search for firms. Um, so, so a little bit of outlay there. I think, uh, the numbers, it's, it's around, uh, ten thousand dollars. I want to say it was about twenty-nine hundred for the marketing, and the, uh, hotel year, uh, uh, trip was, um, around eight thousand dollars. So it might be around eleven thousand, but again, those were reimbursements, reimbursements. But again, Colliers, I want to emphasize, is working for the city of Aiken only, um, and they have not received any commission. Uh, and they will receive the standard, uh, I guess a standard commission, uh, once the property sells, should it sell, uh, while they are still our contracted, um, realtor. Um, Colliers began putting feelers out to their clients and contacts to prepare for a fall release of a request, uh, to request, uh, interested parties. Um, we submitted that with a due date of almost a year ago, December twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. We received, uh, six, uh, inquiries or six written, um, um, documents to review, and, um, in the interim, uh, so, well, let's stop about that for a minute. Also.
Also, during this process, after the failure of Project Pascalus, city staff worked with the design review board to appropriately address a demolition by neglect finding that a citizen filed against the city as a complaint. The DRB had a finding, and we needed to do some work to shore up the roof to meet minimum code standards, which we did, and a little bit above that. But it was just meant to be temporary shoring. Generally speaking, our commercial building code is a minimum standard compliance code. So since the city didn't know what the future held as we went down this road, we did not spend a lot of money to shore up the building. But it looks like the time is now to seriously look at this, and therefore, that's an element of this proposal that's in front of you. So, back to the RFP, and six proposals were received by the due date of December 23rd. Council wanted this process to move as efficiently as possible. So I exercised my council mandate and asked for people, individuals to participate on a review panel. That review panel consisted initially of the mayor, the then mayor pro tem. It consisted of an architect who was not involved in any of the projects that were before us, as well as an experienced construction and project manager. Colliers sort of were the facilitator of all of this, arranging this. We interviewed every respondent who submitted a proposal. Those took place in the winter of 2024, and we quickly saw Oliver Hospitality Group rise to the top based on scoring criteria and interview and portfolio. Also during this time, as we moved, as winter, the page turned from winter to spring, we had an appraisal performed by a branch of Colliers. Some have questioned the propriety of having Colliers separate appraisal arm conduct the review, but it was fair and appropriate and understand that appraisers have very strict guidelines, and they can lose their license if there's any evidence of collusion. And again, the, the fact that the property appraised for what it did vis a vis what the city paid for it, which again averages out, if you look at it, you could, just in a round figure, we paid probably 7.5 million, and factor in closing costs, the city spent about 7.5 to 7.6 million dollars on this property in question, which is all of the 200 West Block of Richland Avenue on the south side of Richland, as well as three storefronts on Lauren Street off that intersection, and then property on Newberry from the corner down to the property line shared with Warnakee Dry Cleaner and Newberry Hall. So again, the appraisal was done to standards. It was done by, this is a very niche type appraisal type work. It was done by a firm who, excuse me, by an individual who specializes in, in appraising historic buildings. He had to bring in someone from Boston, Massachusetts, who also has experience in appraising hotels that are in this sort of condition that have deteriorated and have some, have elements of historic value. So that appraisal came in, and the property appraised for 2.5 million dollars, which you don't have to be a, a business expert or a math whiz to understand that seven point, when you pay 7.5 for something and you, it appraised for 2.5, that is, that's, that's a loss. It's basically appraised for a third, a third of what we paid for it. So in June, negotiations were approved by a vote of six to one of city council to attempt to strike a deal for a purchase and sale agreement along with a development agreement with Oliver Hospitality Group. A purchase and sale agreement was, was struck for 2.5 million dollars, which was the appraised price. I want to note that the other firms that submitted proposals did not want to pay appraised value for the property. I noted in the work session, we had one firm want us to pay them to take the property of, pay them $100,000 and then to the gamut. So this left us, once that purchase and sale agreement was approved, we had been working on a development agreement for a while. It's a lot of back and forth of negotiations, both done by the city staff and Oliver Hospitality Group, as well as attorneys for both sides. And we began traversing a fine line of helping the project move forward while understanding that this agreement is not perfect. If you're looking at it from the standpoint of trying to recoup investment or monetary, just dollar for dollar. But there's several of the elements that I would like to highlight as part of the agreement. The developer is going to replant the property to more clearly delineate portions of the property that will be adaptively reused and therefore eligible for appropriate tax credits and other incentives, and property that will have new construction on it. We would contribute monies from the so-called plutonium settlement funds to not exceed $2 million for stabilization within the building envelope and improvements of, of the building as, and see, the, the, one of the things I think that needs to come out is, the reason why we have the two agreements and we're doing it this way is the city, if, if this were to pass, the, this work can begin immediately. We would work hand in hand with Oliver Hospitality. And what that means is if this passes, the city is not going to remit a check for $2 million immediately to Oliver Hospitality. No, this is going to, the city's going to hold that money. We're going to work hand in hand on very specific things and begin towards the goal of, of getting ultimately to the sale. Some of the things are going to be some streetscaping improvements. There will be improvements to the roof, to the, to the facade. There will be relocation of utilities. There will be, we'll, we'll ultimately work with the developer on the publicly accessible courtyard that will be public space, but it will be owned by the developer. I liken it, it's, it's a concept similar to what we have in the alley. The alley is publicly owned by the city of Aiken. However, it is, it is accessible, obviously, to the public, but there are times when you can rent the alley, folks. We've had school district, the hospital, entities have rented, rented the patio, and that has necessitated what I would call like a closure of the alley in that people can still come in there, but it is, you couldn't have, if, if someone is leased space, you can't have competing bands, for example. So unless someone's rented the courtyard out for a wedding, that would be some nice publicly accessible space that Oliver Hospitality is offering up to the, to the, to the public. It will be maintained by them, so will not have, the city will not be responsible for that maintenance. Parking deck construction project is proposed for a portion of the property. The deck would be four levels plus rooftop parking, so essentially it's five levels of parking with four constructed levels. The building cannot exceed 55 feet, and the number of spaces is still being determined, but we expect the amount to not, to be around 210 spaces. Two, I've heard 210 and 211. It would be built by the, by the developer. The city would pay that construction cost plus a 12% developer's fee. At the recent meeting, we were, I was asked how much the garage would cost, and the brick and mortar construction will be around seven, between seven and seven and a half million. So we'll just split it and say seven point and a quarter, 7.3. Then with some of the other soft costs and, and related fees described, it does put the cost at $9 million. So the, one of the things that the developer would lease 90 spaces, approximately 90 spaces, paying local market rates. Now, I've been asked, well, what is the local market rate? It's hard to say at this point, but while we don't like to compare ourselves to other communities, we have looked at other communities as it relates to this. And I think we are certainly not Columbia, South Carolina, but Columbia has, I think, is, is something that's a logical comp in that Columbia's in South Carolina, it's geographically close to us. They have a large number of parking garages, but typically what Columbia has seen is that if you have parking, kind of a baseline lease rate, and, and again, this would be paid by the, by the developer, Oliver Hospitality, as they'll own and operate the hotel. It could be $50 a space, approaching in, in that $50. If you look at Columbia as an example, if there, if you have a parking garage that public employees park at, it's $50. The, the cost is generally about $50 per space per month. As you move away to more other types of professional buildings, law offices, accounting, et cetera, it can go up towards $100 a space. Again, that just provides kind of some perspective at this point, because this hasn't been approved. We haven't exercised a lot of, of energy or, or time to determine that, but I think that is a reasonable comparison. The developer with the city's support would work with the county to potentially obtain a multi-county park designation for only the new construction portion of the project. Again, so we're talking the area where the current Holly House Motor Court building is, as well as if you look at the map that's in the agenda packet, that is, I'm not sure, oh, I'm not sure what the page number is, but it's up on the screen. It's essentially the two fluorescent green spots where new construction would go, which is again bisected by B Lane at the intersection of Richland East and B Lane. And again, that is, the, we would find that the Hotel Aiken configuration qualifies as two separate abandoned buildings for abandoned building revitalization state income tax credit purposes. There would be, and this is something that I know we've discussed, we've discussed for a while, going back a number of years, even before the city owned it, some sort of drop off for, for the hotel. Maybe it, we don't know the form it could take. It could be in the form of spaces, it could be a bump out, but some for patrons who are arriving or departing can safely deposit or drop off luggage and before cars are parked. And in accordance with the economic development ordinance the city has had since 2018, we would, as we've done with other projects, make them eligible for necessary rebates, a business license, impact, utility impact fees, permits, et cetera. This, the, the project is something that, that I think people have been waiting for a long time for, and we're one step closer, at least as far as making it to a second reading. And now it is before the council and the public for comments, questions, and so on. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well put. Is there a motion?
I so move, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Broll made the motion and a second.
I'll second that motion.
Second one from Councilwoman Price. Any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, members of city council, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Fred Kidd. I moved to Aiken two and a half years ago from Lexington, Kentucky, with a 35-year degree in interior design and also one in historic preservation. I've witnessed buildings destroyed, historical buildings destroyed in my hometown of Lexington because people said and argued about what was the best thing and what they wanted, to the point, by the time they finally agreed, the buildings were such in bad shape, it was cheaper to tear it down and build a new one. I don't want to see that, this, this building. One of the reasons I moved to Aiken was because of its love of history and the historic buildings that's got in it. I understand more than anyone, being in preservation, that always what you want and what you get are two different things. But you have to look at the bigger picture of what's best for the building and to preserve it for future generations of this city. I highly recommend that you approve this notion that's before you, move ahead with the approval of this hotel and the instruction that is wanting to go into this corner. I think it's good for the city, and I think in the long run, people will come to love it just as much as what I think I'm going to. I don't agree with everything in it, but again, I'm looking at the bigger picture in it saving a building that's historic and it's been here for many, many years. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Fred. Any other comments?
Good evening, everybody. Louis Rinaldini, 638 Magnolia Street. And I also want to recommend that you approve this, and I want to congratulate you on getting to this point. I think some of us have followed this process as it went along, and I couldn't be happier with the way it was handled. And more importantly, I couldn't be happier with the dialogue we have about this. I think it's a good, open dialogue, where people have been able to say things that they like, things that they don't like. It's been civil, it's been positive, it's followed the law, which makes me even happier. And again, all of us have little things that we might wish were slightly different one way or another, but I think the most important thing is let's get going and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, Jake, excuse me, Jacob Ellis again. As someone who's been fighting for this since 2015, when the first proposed renaissance of Aiken was brought before us, I'd just like to fully give my support for this sale to Oliver Hospitality and the plan going forward. It is right now the best plan, I think we're on Plan Three now, the best we have seen since many years, and I hope to see it come to fruition, and I look forward to seeing the progress. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I've had the honor of working with many of you, but to our new council members, my name is Emily Sams. I'm the executive director of Aiken Downtown Development Association. I want to strongly express our support for this hotel project. A successful downtown doesn't happen by chance. It requires strategic investments that attract people, strengthen our businesses, and enhance the overall experience of being in the heart of Aiken. This hotel does exactly that. We know from ongoing conversations with merchants, visitors, and community partners that there is a real need for additional lodging within walking distance of our shops, restaurants, and cultural venues. This project meets that need and brings new energy, new customers, and new opportunities for the small businesses that define downtown Aiken. Beyond supporting local commerce, this hotel represents a long-term economic benefit for the entire city. a long-term economic benefit for the entire city, creating jobs, generating revenue, and helping us maintain the vibrant, welcoming downtown our residents value. For these reasons, Aiken Downtown Development strongly encourages approval of this project. It is an investment in our community and in the continued vitality of our downtown. Thank you for your time and dedication to this important matter.
Good evening.
Hey, y'all. Hey, Madam Mayor. I am Jeanette Mosley. I own Vampire Penguin and Spa 106. So if anybody has any reservations, it should be me. I have been in this fight since day long. Getting to this point has been exhausting and been a roller coaster ride. But I am here to tell you that I 100% believe that if you guys are really looking out for your small businesses downtown, these people have us in mind. I have had the pleasure of speaking with them, and I feel very confident that they have us in mind too. If you want your small businesses downtown to flourish and grow, this needs to happen. We need this hotel. We need this development. We need people downtown to shop our businesses. And they're only going to do that if it doesn't look like this anymore. So all of you need to go ahead and say yes. Pass this. Let's get this thing over with. Let's move past this. We need this place beautiful again. So let's do it. Let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Good evening, Sam.
Good evening. Sam Herb, Dibble Road, Aiken, South Carolina. Let's see, I have been a merchant here for thirty-two years, thirty-two and a half years in the alley. Sold it in thirteen. Since I've opened, I've been a property owner downtown for forty-five, close to forty-five. Not many people in this room can say that. I'm proud of it. My heart has always been for downtown and for Aiken. It has. You know, when the mall was being built, we, I was part of forming ADDA. Thanks, Emma. And the first thing we did was streetscape. Then we did lights. And then we did ballards. Then we did a festival site. We had a 2020 campaign happen. Aiken Corporation was formed. Look what Aiken Corporation has done in this town. I just cannot express enough for the support of award-winning Oliver Group to move forward with this. We don't need delay. We don't need, we just need your vote tonight to move this forward. We really do. I had a bunch of stuff to say, but I think I basically have said it. So I'm behind you. I'm behind the Oliver Group. I wish them well. This is going to be a huge plus for our merchants, our small business, and it'll take downtown to the next step that it needs to be. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening again. Lynda Johnson, 515 Parkside Drive. I'm speaking on behalf of the Board of the Historic Aiken Foundation. The board is excited that renovation of the Hotel Aiken and the associated properties is moving forward. Four years ago, we joined the community on a journey to preserve the hotel and those properties from demolition and to revitalize that block. It's taken too long to get here, but we finally have a qualified, highly qualified developer who can do this for us. Oliver is our best bet for historic preservation. They have the experience and the track record, and they intend to run the hotel and restaurant themselves. They're going to stay invested in this community. We're not interested in wasting money. However, it is our belief that the city's agreement with Oliver is reasonable and fair and less costly to the taxpayer than prior unnamed projects would have been. Delaying will cost the city more in lost tax revenue and maintenance costs, and it will indirectly be hurting small businesses. I'd like to highlight a few points. The city has already lost the five million dollars that it overpaid for the properties. It's not going to get that back. At least as far back as 2015, the city was planning to build a publicly funded garage, in part to support the hotel. We know that parking decks are controversial, but all the bidders for this project said new parking was necessary, and we trust their experience. The 2015 hospitality tax specifically said part of that tax was to fund a parking garage. So hopefully, some of that money's around. Okay. In past proposals for the hotel properties and the garage, the garages would have been larger and more expensive, and the hotel operator would have been given free space in the garage. Oliver's going to have to lease it at whatever this market rate is determined to be. It makes sense for Oliver to oversee the construction of the garage as a general contractor rather than get a separate entity. Oliver has proven that they understand the importance of designing and building a garage that fits the character of downtown Aiken. They can assure coordination with the other projects going on in the nearby area and give single-point accountability to the city. The city's going to contribute funds from the plutonium settlement money, two million dollars, we're hearing, a cap of two million dollars. There's a stabilization task to address issues with the hotel. And some people have said, well, didn't they buy it as is? Well, frankly, these tasks are things that should have been done three years ago to stabilize the hotel before you ever put it on the market. And they are things that need to be done yesterday because the deterioration is accelerating. We can't wait even six months for the whole design process to happen. This needs to happen now. The improvements task includes a lot of streetscaping, utilities relocation. One of the big ticket items is eight hundred thousand dollars for this courtyard that's going to be behind the hotel. This is not a courtyard just for the hotel. This is a public space, much like we have those areas to sit on the alley. Anybody can go sit there. You don't have to be a hotel guest. You don't have to buy a drink there, although I'm sure they're hoping you might. This is going to be a public space on B Lane for everyone to hang out. And maybe someone will get the bright idea to bring bands in there. Incentives like these, doing the utilities, doing the streetscaping, are things that bring companies to downtowns and help revitalize them. It is done everywhere. In Greenville, they built a courtyard behind the new hotel, just like the one that's being talked about. The bottom line is, this time, the city did things right. They followed a legal process. They had a competitive selection for a marketing group, who then ran a competitive selection for a qualified contractor. And that word qualified is important. Aiken deserves a developer that understands and has a track record of developing historic properties. It's time to move forward. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Jim Tunisen, 140 Martin Road, President and CEO of the Aiken Chamber of Commerce. The Hotel Aiken redevelopment represents one of the strongest economic development opportunities our downtown has seen in years. With more than forty million dollars in private investment, this project will transform a long vacant structure into a vibrant boutique hotel that supports year-round tourism, business travel, and downtown activity. The redevelopment is expected to generate significant construction employment, more than fifty permanent hospitality jobs, and millions in new annual visitor spending that directly benefits our restaurants, retailers, arts venues, and service providers. Equally important is the two-hundred-space public parking deck that makes this redevelopment possible. It resolves a documented parking deficit, supports the hotel's guests and employees, and provides over one hundred public spaces that strengthens every business within walking distance. Structured parking is the catalyst that encourages additional redevelopment and maximizes the city's return on investment. It's also important to point out that the Oliver Hospitality Group has a proven track record in restoring historic boutique hotels into thriving destinations, making them precisely the partner capable of delivering a project of this complexity. This is a strategic, public-private partnership that strengthens the economic foundation of our downtown, supports small businesses, increases workforce opportunities, and positions Aiken for long-term competitiveness and vitality. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Good evening again, Jensen Jones, 138 Florence Street, Southwest. City Manager, I had a quick question. Plutonium funds, how much do we still have of those funds?
I don't know off the top of my head, but keep talking and let me see if I can find it.
Okay. Well, thank you. No, I just, you know, first and foremost, I support the project as well. I think we're at a point of sunk cost if we were to be delaying further. So I do support the project. I'm going to advocate as I have been and will continue to do. I would like to see a more accessible downtown Aiken. And I hope that when you go into these meetings with the developer and when you redesign that section of the block, that you will see if we can't get some of those beating crosswalks or talking crosswalks. You know, I have to give my little eel mark. But in all honesty, I just ask about plutonium funds because I want to see, I want to know if, I want to make sure that we're equitably dispensing those, because I do like this project. But this is a for-profit project, and that's great. But I do see the north side underdeveloped. There's a food desert going on down over there. And I want to make sure that some of the money that we do decide to reinvest in this city, of that plutonium money goes towards some of those less sexy, if you will, projects. So I just, you know, keep the little guy in mind. Once again, I support the project, but thank you so much.
And thank you for talking. I was able to find what you asked. And twenty, twenty-six point two million dollars. I'm not going to include the twenty million dollars that's only for the mixed use, the Newbury Street building. Twenty-six point two million dollars is what was allocated. And this, there has been twelve million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand spent, so about thirteen point nine four million balance. There are some allocated projects that have been allocated, but that is what has been spent versus what's remaining.
Awesome. Well, maybe we can get a little bit more for the homeless situation as well. Thank you so much.
Yes, and as it relates to that, we did allocate four hundred thousand to Salvation Army.
Thank you. Thank you, Jensen. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Good evening, Steve.
Steve Silver, 233 Third Avenue, Southwest. I also want to speak in support of the project. I just want to add something on top of what Lynda and Jim were saying, noting that this has been a long and winding road to get here. There's been a lot of money spent, maybe could have been spent more wisely. I think beyond this proposal as it stands now, we need to think about, there is a potential for return on investment if we do this right that comes from hospitality tax revenues that are going to flow, as well as property tax revenues that are going to flow back to the city. And if we do this right, it's going to take longer than we would like, but we will get that money back. If we do this wrong, it's going to have an inordinate negative effect on the city's future and potentially is going to hurt the town that we love, the historic and natural beauty of this town. So I just wanted to add that perspective.
Thank you.
Let me just say, thank you so much because earlier today, I used the term return on investment. So thank you for acknowledging that. I'm an optimist, so I look for a huge return on the investment.
It could have been higher, but.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening, Council. I'm David Blake, 621 Magnolia Street. I'm here to commend the City Council and the City Manager and staff for following the law and for honoring the public process in the selection of first callers who did so much work to bring us the right developer for Aiken. It's something that we really have needed for a long time. This is the best thing that I think's ever been proposed on this scale for the historic downtown. And these people, as one said, are going to run it themselves. They have a successful experience elsewhere. We're all very excited to see something like this happen. But preserving and restoring and enhancing these historic buildings raises the property values of everyone downtown. So this is truly a long-term investment for everyone who lives here. And this vitality, you know, we cannot possibly not vote for this now. I mean, imagine what that would entail. Do we want to go through advertising, RFPs, all this again? I know that there are some things that, you know, weren't perfect. And we will never get back the money that was spent before. We have to just face up to this. You said it best, Mrs. Price. You all really screwed this up. You said it. You've acknowledged it. But we all, we have to move forward. And we have to understand what's best for the city now is to vote in favor of this tonight. Please vote in favor of this, and thank you.
Yes, Teresa.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Teresa Callahan, the eyes on Aiken. All I want to say is, let's get it done already.
With that, if everyone's finished, I will ask for comments from Council.
Mayor, if I could start?
Yes.
First, I had the opportunity today to meet with the Oliver Development Group and was very impressed with their credentials, their experience, their knowledge of the project. I'm an engineer, and I've done many projects very similar to this, and they answered all my questions to my satisfaction. I do have a big however here. I do have a concern on how this ordinance is worded. It's worded as a stabilization and improvement ordinance, and it really is a stimulus package for the developer. I want this project to go forward. I think they're a good group to do this work. But I do have just problems the way it's worded. All these items in that two million dollars that we're paying for the developer are items that he should be doing. I mean, we're paying for his design work. We're paying for improvements to the building that he should be doing. You buy a building, you buy it. You have to do the work to it. Improvements, street facades, that's fine. We can do some cobblestone streets, sidewalks, some nice street lighting. But in here is also improvements to their facades of their buildings. So doing work on their buildings, no. Concerns me. So doing work on their buildings, no, concerns me. The courtyard, I'm hearing more and more about how the courtyard and the hotel will be accessible, which I didn't know before. However, $800,000 is a lot of money to put some tables and umbrellas, but I think that really needs to be looked at. Again, I don't have a problem with the concept. I think if they're paying, right now what I'm seeing is that they signed a contract for 2.5, or developer's agreement for 2.5 million. They've done some more homework and saying, all right, to make the numbers work, we need $2 million more. So the contract really should be rewritten to be a half a million dollars, and we can all say, okay, then we went from 7.5 to .5 and we blew $7 million. I can live with that. Putting $2 million in the side door here, as I'm seeing, kind of bothers me. The parking garage, I have difficulty with that in terms of the developer building it at a relatively high cost. There's, they're, well, they're not paying for it. They're designing it that we're paying for the design, and then they're building it, but the city's going to pay for that, now seven whatever-plus million dollars for that. And I can get around that because, I mean, that parking is needed by the hotel. It's also needed by the area. So I can get around the fact that the city's going to, you know, build that garage and maintain the garage. We're needing to hire staff to maintain that and pay more electric bills and all other problems with a parking garage, and I can accept that. What I can't accept is the fact that this agreement says that the city has to pay the developer for the land of which, where the parking garage is going over, to a tune of In my mind, and what I've done in my past, when we were building a public improvement for a developer, for something he needs, they dedicate the land to the city. And I've done that many times, and developers donate the land to the city, the city then builds a parking lot or whatever to service the building. That makes sense. Having us paying for something that we're building, again, puts a little knot in my stomach. This agreement also calls for over $1 million of construction management, of their development fee, their profit overhead, and a construction manager. A million dollars. And that, again, that's on top of the cost of the construction of the parking garage. That, again, doesn't make sense to me. We have an in-house staff that does major projects. Their only job is major projects. We're doing $80 million water treatment plant, no, $30 million powder house. This $6 million parking garage would be nothing for them to oversee and manage. The developer should design the plans according to his plans and specifications, give it to us, and the city will build the parking garage, and after they have given us a pad to work on. That would save the city millions of dollars just by doing it that way. Having the developer do that, sticking on his, no, his fees to that adds to our costs, and we get nothing out of that. We still, at the end, you get a parking garage. So I think we just need to know what the dollar figures really are. Again, we want this to happen. I want this to happen, but we have to have our eyes open and the public to know that, again, the contract was for 2.5 million. We're giving back 2 million right now. That brings it down to $500,000. They want to sell us, they want us to buy the property where the garage will be, that's 773,000. So we're paying them $273,000 to build this project. Then we're adding on another $1 million development and management fee to them. So we're paying them $1.27 million to build this project. And I want this project to go through, but we have to sit back and look at the numbers and make sure we're aware of all these numbers. It's more than just a loss of $5 million. So I'd like to have this, a lot of this restructured. I mean, that could be done relatively quickly. I'd like to take, have, make sure the parking garage is built by the city at the city's expense and the city's managers. That will save us millions of dollars. And if you want to restructure, give them $2 million in another fashion, that's fine as well. I want to see this project get done as well as everyone else here does, but I just don't like the way it's being done right now.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
I have to say, Madam Mayor, that over the last, I don't know how many months that I have been dealing with this, that my constituents, my friends, also my friends who are small business people downtown, all I hear is, what was it Teresa said? Get her done. And we've looked at this. This is not out of the ordinary. In fact, Ms. Johnson spoke to us in work session, this is not an unusual, an agreement in South Carolina. And after going through this, the longer this is delayed, and each thing that we do to tweak, is a chance that it's not going to get going. And I have to say that I'm ready to move this forward. This has my support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to add a comment. You know, my vote tonight is pretty simple-rooted in the priority of doing what's best for the people of Aiken. This agreement will help us, you know, stabilize the historic Hotel Aiken, improve the downtown, and create a parking deck that will support our local business. And as, you know, me being a 27-year-old servant in this city, my priority is thinking about the families, the workers, and the young people who will rely on this project. This will help us create a vibrant downtown for decades to come. My focus is making sure that every step we take keeps Aiken welcoming, walkable, and full of opportunity for everyone. So I fully support this project. Okay, let's get her done.
I just want to say, I have to write it down because I can't remember anything for five minutes. This proposal was immediately heads above the other five proposals that I was fortunate enough to be involved in, and therefore I must support this ordinance as it reads. Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, you know, for people who love this town, and I think everyone in this room loves this town, we know there is no other place in the world than Aiken, South Carolina. It has been frustrating, the math that didn't math on the previous proposal. It wasn't easy. It caused a lot of hard feelings with people, but when you see a process done right, when you see people wanting to assess appropriately and make up for the things that weren't done right before, it is optimistic. It brings hope for all of us. The Oliver Hospitality Group is truly the best we could get for this type of project. I know we have all been concerned, we've been on a short schedule, those of us who newly got thrown into this mess. It was not easy. I will tell you, it's not. I commend the newly appointed council people to bring their talents here. Pete helped us all look at it better, understand it better, and I think we will all be better because of his discernment and experience. Braylon's new face and facing about what it means for young people, we will be benefited for that forever. I join all of us in saying, I think this is something that needs to be done and is overdue. I drove around downtown before I came here today. It didn't look good. The hotel doesn't, the place doesn't look good, but the one group that I am confident can bring it back to where we all have dreamed and crossed our fingers and hoped and told stories about is the Oliver Hospitality Group. And I bring a perspective from one of my dear friends who texted me earlier, and she said, "We all have feelings about this hotel. We wish," like has already been said, "sometimes we wish it would be a little different, or maybe it could have been something else, but we all have feelings about it and hope that something happens soon and happens the right way. I want my son, my family, to want to move back to Aiken and have a vibrant downtown to draw other people here, too." I don't think any of us on this panel has anything worried about a parking garage. It is what it is. I hate that we've lost money. It's not coming back. But I also believe, contrary to what I thought about a week and a half ago when I was faced with a lot of paperwork and a lot of, "it doesn't matter." It does matter. The process matters. And I am grateful that the Oliver Hospitality Group was willing to talk to merchants so that we had Janet come up here and say, "This is a group that cares about small businesses. They're going to make a difference," because that's what I believe makes downtown Aiken, as we've all heard, the place that is special beyond any other place. So despite the difficulties of getting to this place, despite the work that it's taken for a lot of people in a lot of hours that we might not have wanted to put in over Thanksgiving, just saying, I think we all can be proud that this is the right thing, the right time, the right place for this place that we love. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, my comments is to our audience out there, and the comments you made really, really was impressive, but very sincere about the care you have for the town you live in and how with that passion, you also illustrate that you want others that visit here, that choose to live here, to feel what you feel. I can also say I am so proud of this entire council and what our new leaders bring to us, with us, your new ideas and your respect for each other. I cannot say that enough. Jim, I was at First Friday. I was late in getting there as usual, but I was at First Friday, and Molly, I want to commend you for your service and hate that you're rotating off with your leadership. But Jim, when you talked about Aiken and the hotel and how important it was for folks to attend this meeting and the voice to be heard as well, you didn't say what they should say, but you talked about this town and what you felt, and that sent volumes to me when I heard you make those comments. The love that I see in this room, and Mr. Ramdini, I was surprised to hear your comments and because he will go after you whether, if he feels passionate about something, and that's what we want to hear from individuals, but it's all about discernment in how to say things. I cannot thank you enough. This hotel happens to be in the district that I represent, and I am so tired of hearing, "When are you all going to do something about that hotel? Who lives in there?" And all I can say, no one right now. We're going to do something. Something's going to get done. So I feel so great about not only this town, but the people that live in it and the passion that they bring to issues well deserved. Thank you, and thank you all for your service, too.
I'm going to be real short. To tell you, we've got, all of us, I think, were bombarded with emails and phone calls, and most were in opposition of this project and was encouraging us to vote against it. So I came here tonight thinking, it's going to be a long night. It's going to be a fight. We've been through it before with Pascalus. We had so many people getting up, speaking against it, and I was not looking forward to the coming tonight. And that's the truth. But I'm like Lesley, I'm so proud of all of you who got up and spoke in support of this. Jeanette, I think somebody just called me today and said, "Yeah, you should think about businesses like Vampire Penguin. She's being impacted by that. Are y'all not thinking about her?" Okay, I hope they're listening. I really do. I really do. And Emily, you know I love you, speaking about the merchants downtown, the businesses downtown, and how they feel about it, that means a lot to us. So many people think that we have no love or respect or don't even care about our downtown business people. That's a ball-faced lie. I just want y'all to know that. Sam, you've been around a long time, and I know how you feel about downtown. You can't let it go. You really can't. But most surprisingly, I'm like Lesley, Mr. Real Dini and Mr. Blake, where are you? But I saw him coming up, I was like, oh my God. What is he going to say? So I am just so happy and so proud of my Aiken nights. We stuck together on this one, y'all. Together we stand, divided we fall. Y'all stood up tonight. We won't forget that. We thank you so much. Thank you for making my night, and theirs, too.
And she may not want me to share this, but she goes in for surgery on tomorrow, so we bade her surgery to go well.
I'm going to call for the vote, please. All those in favor? That would be unanimous except for one, all those opposed. One opposition, that's Mr. Councilman Messina. The rest is a yes vote. Thank you all.
The team wants this contracting team.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Craig Bradford with the Oliver Group. I wanted to just take a moment after the vote and just say, the, you know, the trust that this town has put into our hands, we take it seriously. It's a very, I mean, I'm pretty emotional right now. We're excited to be here. We're excited to change, to be part of the change of Aiken, be in the community now. So just wanted to say thanks. We'll do you proud.
The next item under old business is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving certain economic development incentives for residential development to be developed by Van Rock Holdings and commercial development to be developed by? Okay, sorry. Developed by VP Riverside LLC. Developed by VP Riverside LLC. Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. This is an ordinance authorizing certain economic development incentives pursuant to Ordinance Number 0708201A to the City of Aiken Code of Ordinances for a project developed by VP Riverside LLC Rutland Place Approving an Economic Development Inducement and Incentive Agreement and Other Matters Related There Too. And the city council has, we, we have a incentive ordinance, and the master developer is developing the property on Rutland Drive across from Aiken High School. The rezoning of the parcels to plan commercial and plan residential was passed by council July 2024. There are going to be single-family unit residential components with townhomes and detached single-family homes, seven commercial parcels with Tractor Supply being the only confirmed business at the time. The developer estimates the total investment to be approximately $58.9 million, and the commercial investment of $15.1 million. This is a good faith estimate of up to $74.2 million. So we have met and reviewed these fees with the developer. We sat down last week, all the relevant city parties and, and the developer, and we went over all of the, all of the fee, investment, and then looked at the fees based on the investment. These are up to numbers, as noted on the screen. The residential component, as you see, adds up when you look at your building permits, your inspection fees, plan check fees, impact fees, and water tap fees. It is not eligible for business license fee reimbursement. Estimated fees of $713,032. The commercial fees for building permits and inspection fees up to $36,355. Plan check fees up to $18,317.5. Impact fees up to $140,965. Water tap fees up to $12,000. Business license fees up to $168,000. These, again, up to numbers. What you do, based on the ordinance that was, that we have, the Development Incentive Ordinance, is you take those good faith up to estimated fees, multiply it by 50%, and your residential amount is $356,516, and the business amount is $187,747. And again, this would be if, if those good faith estimates are reached, it would be up to that amount reimbursed in a period of, of five years. Again, we know when we had the ordinance discussed at second reading several weeks ago, there was some miscommunication. That, I believe, has, I know that has been resolved because we did sit in the room and spend a fair amount of time handholding and, handholding and agreeing, and we did everything but sing kumbaya. And it is for council's consideration here for second reading this evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Is there a motion to, Councilwoman Price made the motion, second?
I second.
From Councilwoman Diggs. Any comments from the public? Comments from council?
This is not a solid comment. It's just, I'm glad that we're here with this development as well, given some of the things that they have faced. In addition to that, the investment, again, in this area of town. So just want to thank the contractor for looking at that area and investing some revenue base, as well as some new apartments and homes in that area.
And, Madam Mayor, if I may add on to Councilwoman Price's comment, if I remember correctly, we asked them to come back with a little bit higher materials, and they did. They came back with, I believe, Hardy Plank, wasn't it, and some of the other things. So it's going to be what, better than what the original. No, they did come back with Hardy Plank. Is that correct? Yes.
They did.
So thank you. Call for the question. That was unanimous. Thank you. We now move to New Business. We have one item, and it is an ordinance to accept the fiscal year 2024-2025 audit. Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. It is an ordinance accepting the fiscal year 2024-2025 audited financial statements and authorizing variances to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget ordinance. We did have our annual visit from Grant of Malden &amp; Jenkins, and we enjoy hearing Grant tell us that we have an unqualified or clean opinion. What that means is that's the most favorable rating stating that the city's financial statements are presented reliably and fairly in all material aspects, giving our taxpayers confidence in the stated financial health of the city. There are no material weaknesses and instances of noncompliance. And we had, we must by state law have an audit performed every year of the prior fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs July 1st through June 30th, and we should council approve the audit at first and second reading. We will then submit it to the state, which will continue to make us eligible to receive our annual aid to local subdivisions payments, amongst other funds to be eligible for. And first reading tonight is before council. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept this? I so move, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Broll made the motion, and a second from Councilwoman Morgan. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor. Thank you. Is unanimous. Now we move on to petitions and requests. We have one item, and it's approval of the proposed city council 2026 meeting schedule. Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. Couple of things I want to point out. We, we do approve this at the last meeting of the prior calendar year for next year. Historically, we've met on the second and fourth Mondays of each month, except July and December, and we do not meet on the fourth Monday of May if that falls on National Memorial Day, which it does this year. I want to add two unique elements to the meeting schedule. January 14th, which is a few weeks away, the mediation for the Blake et al. versus City of Aiken lawsuit, I guess colloquially known as the Project Pascalus lawsuit. It appeared, based on feedback from city council, that that will need to be a noticed meeting because we have an abundant quorum of council that wants to attend that. And then, of course, our New Horizons. We had booked a facilitator to kind of help with this, and his schedule can't be, his schedule's kind of backed up. And I know Councilman Messina had shared with me, you're unavailable on January 30th because you're out of town for, but, but we have that scheduled. But then again, our, our other meetings, again, multiple meetings, second and fourth Mondays every month between, except for May, July, and December. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to accept this meeting schedule proposal?
I so move.
Councilwoman Diggs, and a second from Councilwoman Broll. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor. Thank you. We will now open the floor to comments, to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for a total of 30 minutes.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I share one thing with Cher. She says, "I've got a big mouth, and I use it." Well, I use mine, especially when it comes to something I have a passion about. I've served on a lot of city boards and a lot of state boards. I know the job that you all do is hard, regardless of what anybody in this chamber thinks or anybody in this city thinks. You serve with integrity. You try to do the best that you can. Yes, mistakes are made, but they're mistakes that are made with good intentions. I don't think that anyone that sits on this chamber, in this chamber, has been dishonest. I think that what you do is try to represent the best you can, and you have thousands of people wanting something. You can't satisfy everybody. You're privileged information that none of the average citizens of Aiken have. And because you're privileged with that, I rely on you to represent me and make the decisions that I represent, trust that you're going to make. And I want to thank you all for your service, and thank you for every headache that you've had, and I know it's been a lot. And I thank you so much, and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Fred.
Wow.
I just want everyone to know that that's my constituent.
And I just want to personally invite you to each and every meeting that we have.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we will now move on to items from the city manager this evening.
Yes, just a reminder, we have our annual employee awards luncheon this Friday at 12:30 at the HO Week Center for our active employees and council. And it, again, city offices will be closed Friday at noon, and will reopen Monday at 8:10. And our holiday schedule's listed in the online. So again, thank you and Merry Christmas. And I hope everyone has a wonderful, happy, healthy, and safe New Year.
Thank you to you all. Happy holidays. And to my council members, is there a motion to adjourn? Councilwoman Broll made the motion, and Councilwoman Messina seconded.
Either way.
Either way. Thank you all. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.